And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence? Thank you. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed in fact may be discussed. And other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being shown live on cable and livestreamed on the West Bridgewater Community Access Media website, wb-cam.org. A recording of this meeting will also be available on wb-cam.org. Can I get approval of the meeting's minutes from our August 26th School Committee meeting?
Moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
So we have some new personnel tonight to introduce. I think we'll start off with Ms. Marble.
Hello. I'd like to welcome two district-wide staff members. One of them couldn't make it tonight because she has a second job. She teaches ice skating to youngings. Her name is Carrie Walsh. She's our certified OT assistant. And we have Grace Barrara who's here. One of us. She's our new speech and language for Howard and High School.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to say, although it's only week three, I'm already so overwhelmed by how welcoming and supportive everyone has been so far, and I'm really excited to be a part of this district.
Middle Senior High School?
Thank you. We have quite a few new staff to our building today, this year. Veronica Bissonnet is our first instructional assistant in the middle school. Veronica, why don't you come up and say hello?
Hi, everyone. So my name's Veronica Bissonnet, and I am going to repeat what Carrie said. Super welcoming, beautiful building. I'm thrilled to be here. I'm very excited about the school year. So far, the students have been pretty good, no issues. I'm just feeling like right at home. So hopefully, the year gets better and we can get through the pandemic and have like normal days without worrying about a mask. But yeah.
Thank you. Next is not a new face to the town, but new to our building, Sarah DeLuca, Middle School Math.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sarah, and this is actually my third year in the district. I was the STEM teacher for a while, and now I'm super excited to teach middle school math. I actually went to high school here, so I'm very excited to be back and back in the district, and I love it so much I came back. So, thank you.
Next, we have Mara Maloney, who is our Learning Center Special Education Teacher.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mara. Very excited to be here. I came from Foxborough, worked in a therapeutic program, so this is a little different. It's a severe program, but it's been great. It's really nice to create something new for Kathy, and I'm loving it so far. And again, super welcoming. Everybody's been really great. The kids are phenomenal, and really looking forward to a good year. So, great to be here.
Thank you, Mara. Another familiar face to the town, but new to our building this year, Emily Quinn, Middle School Instructional Assistant.
Hello, hello. My name's Emily Quinn. Just like Sarah, I am a West Bridgewater graduate, class of 2014. I'm working alongside Mara Maloney in the Learning Center, which is super cool and super awesome. Having a great time, loving working with everybody in that room and the middle school team. I'm also the girls JV soccer coach, so come check out a game. Go Wildcats. Thank you.
Thank you. And then one person who's not on the agenda but walked in, so I feel like we should say hello. We didn't ask our long-term subs to come in, but Kiara Herrick is our long-term eighth-grade science teacher. So Kiara, if you want to come up and say hello. Thank you for coming.
Hi, everybody. My name's Kiara Herrick. I am the long-term substitute teacher for the seventh and eighth-grade middle school science classes, and it's been a great opportunity so far here. Everybody is, as everyone has already said, very, very welcoming. I love the students already. It's going to take me a long time to remember all their names. There's a lot of them. But I really am gracious to be offered this, and I hope that turns into more than a one-year position. So, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Kiara. Thank you. That's all for the Middle Senior High School.
Good evening. The first person I'm going to introduce is Ms. Brittany Elliott, our new school psychologist. Nice and slow.
Hi, everyone. I'm Brittany Elliott. I'm the new Howard School Psychologist. I'm really excited to be a part of the West Bridgewater School community, and getting to know the students, the parents, the families in the community is going to be something that I'm really excited for. So, thank you.
And the second person I'm going to introduce is the K-6 STEM teacher, Ms. Sophia Sullivan.
Hi, I'm Sophia Sullivan. I took over Sarah's old job as the STEM teacher. This is my first year teaching, and so far, it's been a great experience. Everyone has been so welcoming, and I look forward to the rest of the year.
The third person I was going to introduce can't be here tonight because she's working. Her name is Ms. Kendra Pimentel. She's the new building IA. Thank you.
So we had a lot of new hires for the Rozelle and Spring Street, a lot of familiar faces that you'll see when they come up. So we'll start with Madison Shea, grade-three teacher.
Hi, everyone. My name's Madison. I'm a first-year, third-grade teacher. I actually spent my last year in third grade at Rozelle as well, student teaching, while I was finishing my masters through Westfield State. And I also grew up in West Bridgewater, and I'm really excited to be back in the community. And fun fact, actually, the classroom that I'm teaching in now is the first classroom I was a student in, in West Bridgewater.
Next is Rachel Rosendi, grade-three teacher.
Hi, everybody. I'm Rachel. I am a third-grade teacher at Rozelle. I started my teaching career doing student teaching at the Howard, got hired to be the remote teacher for fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. And this year, I'm going into my second year of teaching with actual students in front of me, which is really exciting. So I'm very happy for the opportunity to continue staying in West Bridgewater in the district and still be a Wildcat. So, nice to meet you all.
Next is Kelly Goufoyle, Behavior Technician. I'm going to get that name eventually.
I'll give that fact. Hi, everyone. I'm Kelly. I'm the Behavior Tech over at Rozelle. I've been a Behavior Tech for the last five years. I came from Holbrook. I absolutely love doing behavior, and I love being at Rozelle right now. Everybody's so welcoming. And the fun fact is, I am getting married on New Year's Eve.
So I don't have to know that last name anymore. And Jennifer Terry, Instructional Assistant.
Hi, y'all. My name's Jennifer Terry. I've actually worked in the district for two and a half years in the Food Services Department. This year, I had the opportunity to work as an instructional assistant in Rozelle, grade-three, and I'm super excited for it. My kids have grown up in West Bridgewater, so being in the classroom and in the school still is really awesome. I love being a Wildcat.
At the Spring Street School, we have Sarah Mando, our new school nurse.
Hi, everybody. I'm Sarah Mando, and this is my first year in school nursing. Really happy to be here. I was able to start with the extended school year summer program, and that kind of eased my way in, and I just loved it. Amazing group of nurses. Julie, Lynn, and Peggy are awesome, very experienced and knowledgeable, supportive, which is great, knowing that they've already been through a year of COVID. So, anything that we face, we can do it together. So that's really great. Also, awesome, supportive team at Spring Street. Maureen is my go-to, and she's always there, and she's got my back. I love that. Great group of teachers, good students, and just so happy to be here. Fun fact, I'm also a certified nurse midwife, so if there are any OB emergencies, you can give me a call as well.
We'll have you on speed dial. Alicia Dancy, preschool teacher.
Hi, I'm Alicia Dancy. I am teaching the, one of the integrated preschool classrooms at Spring Street. I came from Mansfield, and I'm really happy to be here. I've enjoyed working with everybody so far. I think it will be a great year.
Dawn Hayes, Instructional Assistant.
Hi, I'm Dawn Hayes. I'm a graduate of West Bridgewater too, long before the younger ladies before us. I'm going to be an IA in kindergarten. I'm just really excited about it. The kids are great, and the school's great. So, thank you.
Nicole Melcher, Instructional Assistant.
Hi, my name's Nicole Melcher, and Keita was kind enough not to tell us we had to get up here, so I don't have anything prepared. I'm a graduate of West Bridgewater. I have two kids in the school system. I am an instructional assistant in kindergarten, one-on-one with Kim Gothier, and so far, I love it. Thank you.
Denise Moody, Instructional Assistant. I didn't skip over you.
Hello, my name is Denise Moody, and I am actually a school choice family. And I fell in love with the district six years ago and started subbing. And I was lucky enough to get an IA position with Alicia, and I just love it. Everyone is awesome. It's the best school. So, thank you.
And lastly, I think she was our last-minute hire, or two of our last-minute hires. Jenna Waller, Instructional Assistant.
Hi, my name is Jenna Waller. I am a graduate from West Bridgewater 2001, way back when. I got out of West Bridgewater because it was too small of a town, and the whole reason I wanted to come back is because it's so small of a town. So I wanted my kids to go through the same school system I did. It was pretty bittersweet. Like Keita said, I am a new hire, and I'm working with another new hire, and we are getting it done with Ms. Dion's class in kindergarten. So, thank you.
My apologies. Our very, 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 very last-minute kindergarten hire, Ms. Emily Dion, kindergarten teacher.
Hi, I'm Emily Dion. I was, last year, I was the remote teacher for kindergarten in Bridgewater. That was a one-year position, obviously, because of COVID. And now, I'm the kindergarten teacher at the Spring Street. I love it, and I'm so thankful to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Nice, large group, and we're happy, just was happy you guys are here. To be here, we're very happy to have you here. And I know that over the years, there's been a lot of teachers who've stayed a long time here in the school district because they do love it, because of the administration here and everything. So hopefully, you all will be here for a very, very long time, and we appreciate all the time and everything that you guys do for the kids. So at this time, I think we'll take a short break, so you guys can get out of here and start getting ready for tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just noticed this. This is Mrs. Paula Bunker and the Lions Club.
I wonder how many of them want to comment if they knew they had to say something.
I know. Surprise!
They talk all day.
Okay, what's that? Superintendent's update. Mr. Bardwell.
All right. Well, we've had the opening weeks of school, but they haven't been full weeks. So this is the first real test, with the first full week. But we started out very strong. The principals and members are going to talk about their experiences and how the opening started for them. But I got to say, walking in the building, teaching them several times over the last, you know, few days, just really impressed with, you know, what they've done, sort of getting the kids ready to learn, staff, everyone involved. They've done an outstanding job. But before they talk, I thought, you know, we could show their acting skills. As well, we have a welcome back video that we did put out there. We didn't know that.
Have we seen this enough?
Not live, they haven't even.
Do you want to write essays that inspire messages?
Welcome back. Children, staff, and families, the start of the new school year. Our administrative team has been working hard, prepared for the new school year, and we've even found time for a few adventures. What makes West Bridgewater so successful is our amazing talent students, our dedicated, hard-working staff, and the West Bridgewater community that values and supports our school system. Over the past year, we've had to work together to climb the many mountains that have been pushed in front of us, but we've all worked together to reach the top. I see the summit. We're almost there. Let's go. Watch the motor car! Is that going to look up here? Come on, Wildcats! We're almost there! We know that there will always be good ends, and we will always work to overcome them. We will never lose sight of what's going for our children. It's hot up here. It's so hot! Oh, my goodness! It's so hot up here! Is that a garage, or is that a friendship park? Come on, Wildcats! Let's go! You know, from time to time, we always jerk on the borders. But don't worry, we are all here to do what's done. We are so proud of all of our amazing students and want to give you the skills, knowledge, and confidence to reach for the stars. Welcome back! Yeah, huge thank you to Mr. Craig for putting that all together. We haven't gotten any callbacks from Mrs. Brogna for the school project, but we're waiting. We're waiting. That time of year is coming. Thank you all. The overall message of, we wanted to welcome our kids back, our staff, and our families. We hope you all have a great year. All right, so this is Dee. Did you want to talk about the opening and recent curriculum?
So, we've had a great start to the year. The kids have come in, great attitudes. You know, we say it all the time, we have great kids. We really do. It just adds so much life to our building. You know, most of our job, we get into this because we love working with children. And so having them here every day, our senior class this year, great leaders, they're just wonderful kids. You know, not everybody loves to come to school, but I think we, here, we make it work. And most kids want to be here. And, you know, of course, there's a few, and we're working with families to help through the transition from this past year that we've had. So, there's still work to do, but we want to get it done. As far as Curriculum Night, we just held it this past Thursday. I would say typically, we don't get as many high school parents as we do middle school parents, and I would say, I think there may have been a fair, even number between the middle school and the high school parents. So it was really nice to see all the parents. One of the things that we did add this year was to have some of our middle, senior high school students at tables with, talking about the clubs and activities that the students can join. Inclusion Matters was also another table. So it was a great informative night, I think, for curriculum, for parents to see teachers, and just to learn more about what we have to offer outside of the classroom for the kids. So all in all, I think it was a great success.
Good evening. So the first couple of weeks of school have gone really well. The students are very happy and very helpful, especially with me transitioning in to let me know how things used to go, and how we're sort of doing things, and really, really just having a lot of communication. I can say that my highlight through the first eight days has been the fifth-grade recess. We do a walk-and-talk, and it's really a real highlight of the day, just to walk with the students, and you can, they're happy. It's sunny out, and thank you so much for the nice weather. Our Curriculum Night is this Thursday, the 16th. The hours have all been posted online on all of our media sites and our website. We're hoping for a big turnout, and I'll be at the front for anyone who wants to see me. So we're going to fill out their, all the families right to their classrooms, because that's really what Curriculum Night's about, meeting their teachers, seeing their children's schedule, and asking any questions they have. Thank you.
Just like the other schools, we've had a very positive opening this year. And I think I say this every year, it's the biggest group we've ever had, but this year, it's three, we have 318 students. We've never tipped over 300. And you can feel it. It's a full building. But I think the whole epitome of what it means to be in an elementary school is to see the students interacting with one another. On the first day, when I was outside going over recess expectations with the second graders, now remember, they were there in first grade, and we had classes one by one playing. One of the little girls says, "But wait, we get to play with everyone?" So it's those little things that really made it like so much more this year. The teachers have worked extremely hard. The kiddos know their routines. And again, me and Ms. Shalinski joke about all the time, one of these days, we're going to regret all the noise in the cafeteria, but right now, we're just loving that everyone is back together. Curriculum Night is on the 23rd. I've sent out in the principal's newsletter, so you do actually have to read it, all the details about what the times and the sessions. It's also posted on the website. And Spring Street? Spring Street, too, is a pretty, you know, happy place. Again, one of the biggest groups I've ever had, 154 students of preschool and kindergarten. So that's a really busy place. Watching the kiddos walk in now, Mr. Bardwell's out there a lot in the morning as well, just seeing them walk in all by themselves now. It's amazing the independence a five-year-old can have when they want to be there. And again, one of the grandmothers on the second day of school in the morning said, you know, "My granddaughter was so excited. She got off the bus and said, 'I get to go back tomorrow.'" So if we can keep that happiness in place, then we're doing something right. Curriculum Night for Spring Street will be on October 7th, and I'll be sending out details this week.
Mrs. Lynn, just quick mention to those watching about the change in their office.
Yes. So we have relocated the Spring Street School office. So it is, if you're at the gazebo, you're looking to the left doors. Mrs. Ellis is there along with Mrs. Mando. It kind of just separates the school part and the superintendent's office. So any school business, we go to the Spring Street School doors, and there's a nice, big sign there now. So, okay.
It really does make a team effort, and everyone working together. And I think we say this every year, and I hope we never take it for granted. I mean, people compare last year to this year, and I'll tell you, it's not any easier this year. Last year was really tough, but there's so much going on. We've got everyone back. But from our administrators, to our office staff, to all of our educators, the students, the families, the West Bridgewater police who helped out on that first day and helped direct traffic, our food services, and the custodial and maintenance staff, everyone worked together. And it works out well because of the teamwork, because of the collaboration. So I just want to thank everyone that's involved in the opening and every single day, because everyone working together, you know, makes a huge difference.
COVID-19?
All right. Just some reminders that we do have our COVID page up. We did archive stuff from last year, so if people are looking for that, that is archived on the website. We posted out new information this year, back-to-school plan, the information about tests and stay, and other important pertinent information. Hopefully, that's the go-to place. We're also, once again, doing our COVID-19 dashboard. That is updated as regularly as possible in terms of when new cases come in. The nurses will help to identify close contacts, working with the principals. They're doing that, you know, all hours will be day, yin, night. I give them so much credit, all the hard work that they're putting into that. Over the weekends, they're calling and finding close contact. So when people go on, they're at it, and then when they come off, they're at it. We developed a spreadsheet that is very comprehensive, so we can try to keep as accurate numbers as possible. This week, we start, we will start reporting to the state any new cases. They hadn't asked for it before today, so we'll report new cases to the state as well. We are participating in testing, as we explained in the last meeting. We are participating only in tests and stay. I have put information out through a letter, and originally, we had sent a paper consent form, but after further review, we've gone to the electronic form. So I do apologize for any inconvenience that may have caused people. Just to be clear, the consent form is a blanket consent for all three. This is a consent form from CIC. But I put up in numerous times, I've said it numerous times, that we are doing tests and stay because it allows students, if they, if they consent, again, this is all voluntary, parents need consent, but it allows students to stay in school if they're asymptomatic, close contact. So I think that's the biggest thing that we're looking for. I believe our educators are looking for that, and our families. Parents can choose not to participate in that. Absolutely, 100% their right. If they choose not to participate in it, then they will just follow those quarantine guidelines. We're still going to notify families if they're in close contact, if they're within the three feet, that they're, you know, that they can participate in tests and stay and they need to quarantine. And we'll also let you know if they're within the six feet, but they do not have to quarantine. That's the same way it was at the end of last year. We know it's overwhelming. All the information that's out there. The guidance is overwhelming. So if people have questions or concerns, and I get pretty regular emails from people, I maybe I'll answer them right away, or I may look to one of the nurses to help provide more information. But it's okay to ask questions, because I think we're all, you know, want to make sure we give the most accurate information. But again, the rationale behind tests and stay is hopefully to keep kids in school if they're close contact. Any questions or concerns?
With the tests and stay, I have two questions. My first one is, it says you would do testing for five days, or at least five days. How would that work over the weekend if you have, you know, like if you, say you start testing on Thursday, Sunday, or Wednesday? Sunday would technically be the last day.
Correct. We're working with CIC to gather more information. They haven't completed the trainings yet. There is the option to send test kits home, but we haven't finalized that. And I will say this too, not to go off the answer, but I was with a bunch of new superintendents, or secondary superintendents today, and it's all over the place in terms of who's received their testing supplies, who's gotten information, you know, through their contacts at CIC. So there's still information that we're lacking, that we're trying to gather. So that's a very good question. Then also, we go to a student athletes who may be participating. We have games or matches over the weekend to be eligible to participate.
So is this not the company that was used last year by other schools?
It was not. I don't know the company, the name of the company that was done, they did the pool testing. I believe when they put it out for, did, that CIC was the chosen company. I do not think they did the pool testing last year. I could be wrong, but we weren't involved, so I didn't really get into who did the testing.
Oh, okay. I was hoping it was the same company, so that someone else had some experience with them before us, but...
They didn't do tests and stay last year. All they did was offer the pool testing.
Okay. And then the other thing about the tests and stay, the sign up for it, so I think we have to be very careful. I know our lead nurse sent an email to all of us today about this, that we are pretty clear right now in our district that we are only participating in the tests and stay, but when you sign up and you give consent for the tests and stay, there's no way to give consent for just tests and stay. So if anything is to change in the future, you're giving consent for all three of the options and the only way to unconsent it is to opt out later. So that doesn't, that doesn't seem like, I don't know if that's clear to everyone because that wasn't clear to us when we started. We thought you would be able to just opt in for the test and stay. That's why we did the paper consent, correct?
Correct. So when the paper consent goes to going into their database, because there is opportunity to, for nurses or other authorized personnel to add in people, they do just certify that they signed up for COVID testing. So that's why I tried to be clear in the email. The most recent email I sent saying, yes, you are consenting to all three. If we were to change, I would come to the committee, I would talk to you about that, I would put it out there because I do understand the consent. But I want to make it clear that that's still, we don't have the ability to simply just select the test and stay. It's a blanket consent, but we said it from the beginning and we continue to say the test and stay is all consent. And that's not unlike many districts. Many districts are participating only in test and stay. They have to use that same form as well.
Okay. It's just a little confusing because we're saying that, well, in the consent, you're giving consent to an outside company. It's not West Bridgewater schools that is, or the nurses within West Bridgewater that are doing the testing. It's an outside company that's doing the testing. So we're giving, so when you give consent, it's not to us, it's to them.
It's, you do have the ability to call CIC to get personnel to come in and test. We've met, the administrators and myself, met with the nurses, we talked about some of their concerns. That's another unanswered question. For example, we have a positive case tonight and people signed up for test and stay. I'm not 100% sure or confident that we can call the coordinator and say, we need, you know, staff here tomorrow morning at 7:30, 8 o'clock, 8:30 to perform these tests. And, you know, it could be the nurses testing, doing the swabs, if the kids are old enough, they're able to swab themselves. So yes, we're going through the company, that's who's providing us with the test kits. But we're not saying it's always going to be the nurses or someone else. It could be a combination of them.
Right, but we're not allowed to keep, like when we collect the consent, we're not allowed to keep the consent here and say, like, okay, this student has consent to do the testing, so we know that. We give the consent to the company and they store that. So there's just, it, the way I felt, the way I understood it last month, I felt like it was, we were doing the testing. And I, that's kind of where I thought it laid. And then as I learned more about it, watched their video and things, it, I don't feel like it's us that is doing it. But maybe I'm misunderstanding it. Maybe it's not, it's not as much an outside company?
Yeah, where, who holds the consent forms? Because they're entered electronically. Technically, it's on the CIC website.
Right, and so you're giving consent not just only for them to do the testing, but also for them to transfer any of the data and like all of the information about, like the medical information leaves West Bridgewater and goes to this outside company too.
Correct. That's who's, that's, that's who signed up. That, that's again through the state phone chat.
You good, Ms. Smith?
Yeah, it seems like we're probably not going to start it because we need, now we need, we were just notified as parents to go in for your student to give consent. Was it on Friday?
Your online consent information was sent out on Friday.
Okay, so until there's students that have been given, that have given consent, they don't even send the test?
They, we do receive the test prior to. So we all have the world testing kits in hand and I believe we may have some coming soon if not. Here, I didn't check in with the lead nurse today when I was out at this point.
Okay, so we didn't, well, we never, like as a committee, we never voted on it. But you're saying if we are to change and do test and stay or change it to something else, we would come back here and vote on it?
I've informed, I want to make sure everyone is well informed. So I would bring it up to the school board because we brought it up before stating that that's, this is the direction we're going to go in.
Okay, but it's not something, it's not like a policy or anything we vote on. It's just something we're offering.
I, again, trying to be fully transparent with the community and the family, saying, this is what we said, this is what we're going to do. I would never want to change course in the middle and just do something, although technically, do we have consent? Sure, I guess, you know, we technically have consent, but I don't feel that's, you know, ethical to then tell someone one thing and then say, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna do something different.
No, and I don't think you did change course. I think we thought last month that you could consent to just one thing. And that's where I think we need to be clear, that it's not us that said, hey, we don't want to just take consent for one test. The program doesn't allow us to take consent for one test. So this is out, like this is outside of our control. Like we're saying that school is offering this, but it's not really the school offering it. It's an outside company.
Basically, the facilitator of the testing.
Right. But it's still, just, like it's an outside company, like if I were to go to CVS and get tested and my information then is, you know, belongs to wherever CVS sends it off to. So, which is different than if, you know, you got, I don't know, your eye exam at West Bridgewater, it doesn't get sent to, you know, out from here. That stays, you know, stood. Okay.
Good?
Okay. Homeschool applications, so voting issue, Mrs. Marble?
Again, in your packets, you have 25 applications which are spread amongst 10 families. This is a decrease from last year. We had a little over 30 families last year. I've reviewed them and they do align with the district's policy, so I do recommend you approve them.
The motion put forward for Mrs. Marble's homeschooling applications?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Mrs. Marble. Donations. We received a nice donation of supplies from Ms. Paula Bunker and the Lions Club. And then we received some H-E-P-A filters, which was donated anonymously, so thank you very much. I appreciate all the donations that we do get to the school and, you know, we can't thank you, but I thank the people enough for really helping the kids out and actually the faculty too as well. Inclusion Matters update, Mrs. Dragonetti?
Sure. The mission of Inclusion Matters as West Bridgewater Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to build inclusive schools and community. We do this by supporting families of students with IEPs and 504s and including regular education parents by offering advice, advocacy within the school system, and opportunities for education and community building through regular workshops and events for parents, guardians, and families. We hope you'll join us at next month's event, the Special Education Basic Rights and Meaningful Parent Participation Workshop, presented by Angela Ferreira. Ms. Ferreira offers educational advocacy services with the arc of Bristol County and through her agency, Advocacy Associates of Massachusetts. She boasts more than 20 years of personal experience, as she is the proud parent of three children, two with disabilities and one adopted from a trauma background at the age of eight. Ms. Ferreira will help to understand the IEP process and educate on basic parent rights. More importantly, participants will learn how to take an active role in the process and how to best advocate for our children. This event will be held on October 12th at 6:30 via Zoom. Just a reminder, we will also be hosting an information table at each school's curriculum night this fall. Please stop by to meet Inclusion Matters board members, ask questions, learn more about us, and join our mailing list for a chance to win three different free prizes. In the words of Jesse Jackson, "Inclusion is not a matter of political correctness. It is the key to growth." For more information about Inclusion Matters and upcoming events, you can find us on Facebook at Inclusion Matters MA or by visiting our brand new website at www.inclusionmattersma.com.
Thank you, Mrs. Dragonetti.
Thank you.
Another voting issue, approval of policies, Mrs. Hume and Mr. Yeo?
Yes, so we had open the community use of school property for our policies last spring at the request of Mrs. Grant, who has since had numerous meetings with Julie Hamel, Jen Ham, Hamel, Julie Hamlin, Jen Hamel, Mr. Bodwell, and others, and reviewed all of the documents and discussed ways to streamline the process when the use of school property or athletic fields, athletic spaces, I should say, is required, requested. So Mr. Yeo and I met with Mrs. Grant last Wednesday and reviewed the proposed changes. And within the Google folder set up for tonight's meeting, there are links to documents that highlight all of the proposed changes for each of the forms and documents. And you should also have a hard copy that I put together that lists all of the requested changes. So just to recap, we have six documents related to the use of school property. We have Policy KF, which is the overall policy. And then we have two documents that list guidelines for school property use and then another for the guidelines for the use of athletic spaces. And we have two applications posted. One is for the use of school property and one is for the use of the athletic spaces. And then we have a fee schedule that's also posted for the use of our athletic spaces. So overall, the significant changes that are being proposed include that a $200 deposit is now required when an application is submitted, refundable only if an application is not approved. The use of school kitchens was removed. The former policy said that the applications were due 10 days prior to the event and that has been changed to at least 15 days prior. And the documents have been updated to reflect that a certificate of insurance must be submitted with the completed application. And then there are two changes to the fee schedule for the athletic spaces for out-of-town organizations. So with regard to the two applications, in a nutshell, those just got a facelift. They were rewritten and redesigned to make it easier on both the applicant and the staff who processes the applications. More information is now captured to eliminate the need for follow-up. The only significant change was that, as I mentioned, the option to check off the use of school kitchens was removed from the application. And then in the Policy KF itself, in addition to the changes I mentioned, under custodial services, the current policy states custodial assignment will be within, will be one half hour before the activity and one half hour after the activity. That was changed to one hour before the activity and two hours after. And then the sentence that stated, in the case of a special use such as the gym or cafeteria setup, one hour is usually required before and after the activity. And that was changed to additional time may be required before and after the activity. And then under duties and responsibilities in the policy, a note was added that if police and/or fire supervision is required and costs are associated, payment is to be paid directly to the police and/or fire department. And then in the two guidelines, the changes to include the update to the new application due date and that a certificate of insurance must be submitted with the completed application. And the athletic field use guideline has an edit to state that the athletic director should be contracted when necessary in preparation for the use of the fields. And then lastly, on the athletic space fee schedule for out-of-town organizations, the hourly charge for field use and the press box was changed from $40 an hour to $100 an hour. I think I got them all, Mrs. Grant, but let me know, or Mr. Yeo, did I miss any?
No, I think that's everything.
So like I said, all of the updated documents are in our folder and I, we follow the same format as the changes, how they're presented to us in the handbooks and that the changes are highlighted in yellow and the text has been changed to red to outline. So I just summarized them, but they're all there for your review. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions? Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, I have a question. Are there any, thank you. This was a lot of work looking. I can see why we needed, yeah, we needed more than a month on this one.
Yeah.
Are, because of these changes, does this impact anyone who already has a, an agreement with us?
I don't believe there are any current requests, so this will be just for new ones going forward.
Okay, great. And then my only other question was, when they cancel within 24 hours, does, do, if we have a custodian hired or planned to be there, does that change their schedule? Or is that not a problem?
Well, I know there is a change in there that if they do cancel within 24 hours, we have the right to charge an additional fee in addition to keeping the deposit. So the option's there. And that, I think, kind of spurred some of the decision to look at these again because we were getting a lot of last-minute cancellations and we had already booked custodians and things. So we just wanted to kind of tighten it up a little bit. Hope I'm not...
Look great.
I do have some questions. First of all, they look great. The form is streamlined. It looks fabulous and I love a streamlined form.
I think Mr. Collins did a lot of work on the form.
It looks really good. I do, I do have a couple of questions and a couple of things that are concerning to me. The broad use of the $200 deposit. When we look at the four different types of groups, A, B, C, and D. A being school affiliated organizations, B being civic and youth, and then C being community organizations, and V being community outside of West Bridgewater organizations. I'm concerned, you know, the custodial fees are waived for Group A, for all of the school organizations, but they're not for Group B. And I think about who fits into that civic and youth. And I think that as a school committee and as a school, we want to encourage these civic and youth organizations and by imposing a $200 deposit and charging custodial fees for things like Kiwanis or scouting, you know, I think it's just kind of discouraging to them to meet in our spaces. And I would love to see that we consider revamping it a little bit more to include groups in Group B. I think that, you know, thank you for sharing them, but we just got them today at 11 o'clock. So I was like quickly looking around at Easton and different communities, see what they do and they use tiered fees. So there are some groups in Group B that are, say, for example, and I'll disclose, I actually have a current building use application on file because I meet with my Girl Scout troops at the high school. So we just use the tables. And if a Girl Scout troop has to put down a $200 deposit and pay the custodial fees, we are not going to be able to meet here. So for that reason, I'm going to actually accuse myself from the vote tonight. But I think that it's something that we need to look into a little bit further before voting on it.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Does the custodial fee have, is it, if, if they're outside their normal hours or if it's during their regular work hours, is there a fee, an additional fee?
Do you want to, sorry, I put you on the spot, Mrs. Grant?
Hi. The custodial fees are typically charged for outside their normal hours. However, we have consistently run into groups who have abused the use of the building and our custodians have had to put in significant amounts of extra work and that takes them away from completing the work that they need to do to get the building ready for the next day. So it is certainly not meant to be a punishment or deterrent to groups like the Girl Scouts, et cetera. We obviously will take a more close look at what's required by the groups who are renting our space. But again, we turn into issues with messes being left. In addition, we have had to chase people down for payment. And, you know, we're really not in the event business. We certainly want to allow building use. We're all taxpayers. The buildings are gorgeous. We don't want them to sit empty, but, you know, the deposit and the custodial fees also help raise the measure of respect that our buildings deserve. Any other questions? Thank you.
Do we want to take a further look at this? Or are you guys comfortable with what you've put together as far as the use form? Maybe some wording here with the Group B, is it? Or what Mrs. Grant had just said, you know, taking a look at it by group by group type of thing?
I mean, I'm fine with the way it's presented, but if other people have issues, we can discuss it further.
I guess the question would be that school affiliated organizations, like would that include like our West Bridgewater, like civic organizations or no, that would it because B has civic?
Yeah, somewhere. And again, there's a lot of pages and thank you, Donna and David, for going through all and capping.
Now, keep in mind, the document that has the fee schedule is just for the athletic spaces. So that's the one that outlines the different organizations and if they request the use of... request the use of the spaces listed, yes.
So, if we had a group that's just looking for a room or some space, they're not required for the building fee, the $200?
For the fees that are outlined here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think the deposit was going to be applicable for any organizations outside of the fees that are outlined, just for the athletic spaces.
Does that help with any of your questions?
So, let me just clarify. So, if a group in Building A, which is anything affiliated with the school, or, I'm sorry, if a group in Building B, or Group B, it's getting late, such as civic and youth organizations, fill out an application just to use a common area or a cafeteria, they are required to put a $200 deposit down for, say, meetings every other week.
No. Sorry.
In fact, that was just for athletic or?
No, the deposit was going to be for anybody, for all the spaces.
For all the spaces. Obviously, Group A does not require deposit. We will look at Group Category B on a case-to-case basis. You know, the Girl Scouts are not going to have to put down a $200 deposit. We made no changes to the categories. Those were already existing in the policy that was voted on previous years. I'll have to admit, they're rather confusing. But at this point in time, we did not have the bandwidth, really, to continue and also go through and make all those changes. So, obviously, if a group has issues with the deposit, an inside group that has never caused an issue, that we haven't had to chase down for other things, certainly give us a call and we'll discuss it. The number of categories, the number of groups outlined, made it impossible to keep the documents even to six very long pages. We could not address every single option and possibility, so give us a call.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think I'd like to see, I'd just like to see a line in there somewhere that, as Mrs. Grant is saying, Group B is on a case-by-case basis, because if it's, if it's not in there, then we're not being consistent with what our policy actually says.
I think that's reasonable. Mrs. Grant explained it well, that it is a case-by-case in Group B only. Is that okay with Donna?
Yeah, that's fine.
David?
If I understand it correctly, though, you, if you're like a weekly meeting, you may come in and say, like, okay, here's my $200 deposit, and that would be for, like, the approval of all the weeks, not every time you come in and be a $200 deposit. Kind of correct? Kind of like when you?
Here, the other reason we've done the deposit is, I think that Donna mentioned, we've had numerous groups sign up for dates, and then, so that eliminates the possibility for another group to use the space, and then they cancel last minute. We lined up custodians, we've made arrangements to rebrand furniture, and we've possibly turned away other groups. So, we need a financial incentive for people to be serious about the spaces that we're interested in.
To build the relationship.
And I would absolutely agree with that. I think, you know, as you said, they are beautiful spaces, and, you know, we shouldn't have everybody in here willy-nilly abusing the property. So, I appreciate all the work you've done on this. Thank you.
Okay, then. So, can we put forth a motion here to approve the policy with the distinction of the Group B, saying it would be a case-by-case, have a sentence put in under Group B, a case-by-case situation on the deposits? Is that reasonable for everybody?
Yeah, because, like, for the selectmen, or, like, if they wanted to come and meet at our school, would we charge them $200?
We might, maybe. We might like to.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so if we amend the policy, are we okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. Could we make a motion then to approve the policy with the one change to Group B?
Moved.
Second.
I guess we'll have a roll call vote. Mrs. Smith?
Aye.
I'm going to recuse myself, because I have a current application on file. Aye.
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 All right. Thank you very much. Accepted. Policy for review coming up, face covering. This is a policy that we had last year, and now we're going to bring it back for some discussion. Obviously, we're going to open this policy back up, so if there's anybody would like any initial conversation tonight about it, we'll take it through the next, to the next meeting, and then if anybody has any specific changes, we'll talk about it next week that like to be made, and we will go through that policy then, but it'll be, like, opened up so that we can take a look at it. Does anybody have any initial conversation about this policy right now?
My only comment about, so, we're opening, we're bringing back the EBCFA as it was before?
No, it's changed. DESI came out with a new recommendation for school committees, so it's similar. I did, I compared the two. It's similar, but there are some changes that are in there.
So, I guess I'm hesitant to make a face-covering policy, again, as we talked about, you know, before, that we're going to follow DESI mandates. So, having a policy to say we follow DESI mandates, we could, that would be something that we could do, that makes sense to me. Or if we want to have a policy saying how we're going to handle DESI's mandates, like, for instance, the way it's going to be enforced, because DESI's left that up to us, or the way we're going to track exemptions or collect data for exemptions and things like that. But I don't see why we would have a face-covering policy, because it's, the mandate is, we're following their direction on that. So, if it was a policy we saw back in August, that recommended policy? Because I think, I think it had a lot of these details that, again, like, so last year, when the mask mandate was lifted, we were outside of our policy, because we weren't, we were following, again, DESI's mandates, which I agree with following DESI's mandates, but then our policy was, we weren't following our policy anymore. So, I don't think we should put a policy in place that can't move with the, with how much they move.
Okay.
Well, yeah. I mean, it did come from DESI, so it was there, it originated from them, so it's not like we, they, so, if, we wouldn't, if they changed it, they would send something else out. Do you know what I mean? Like, it wouldn't be that we would.
So, last year, when they, when the recommendation, when they changed, the state changed the guidelines, and DESI changed the recommendation, they didn't send out a new policy. Then, it was just, we rescinded our policy, because we were no longer in that, and we changed what we were doing right away in the school.
Right. I think they might have sent out some reminders. I don't know if you're on their list, or, but they do keep them, school committees.
If we had a mask policy in effect, and then, out of nowhere, DESI said there's no more requirement for masks, we would still have to have a meeting to read, to get, to take our mandate off before anything could happen here. We couldn't just say, oh, they said so, done. So, that's part of having the policy. We have to, you know, follow our own rules as well. So, that's why I think it's kind of important that we do open this up now. We have some questions, all of us, I'm sure have some questions, to read through it, and hopefully, we can, you know, get back together in, you know, either in October, or if it has to go further, because there's more things, but if we can at least have some of our own ideas of where this should go. I think that's what's important right now.
Yeah, I think it's important that we, we don't, we don't put something in place that isn't going to be in line with what the state or DESI is asking us to do. And that's what happened to us last year. We had a policy in place, and DESI and the state changed it. We changed what we were doing at the school. Our policy lagged behind, and then, then we rescinded it. But for, you know, that period of time, we technically weren't following our own policy. So, I don't think we should put ourselves in that situation again. I don't think it's necessary. I do think there's some things in the mandate that the DESI and the state have left up to us that we need to make clear, but I don't think we need a policy saying that we're going to follow their mandates, unless we're not going to follow their mandates, and then, but.
Just one thing to point out, that in the proposed new policy, it does state that anytime the school committee may review and/or make revisions of this policy, including but not limited to, as may be prompted by the imposition of issuance of federal, state, or local requirements and/or guidance in involving pandemic and public health information. So, that kind of leaves it up, you know, to us to be able to just continually make provisions to it. So, I just wanted to point that out.
And then talking to the attorney, they, you know, they feel that any mask policy could be as simple as following the DESI mandate, and like you mentioned, that there could be other things that were more unique that one, you know, that the committee wanted to add into that policy as well. So, it's a pretty open document. There's sort of thing, you know, we're not required to have a mask policy. Some districts are, some districts aren't. But the attorney advises, you know, to have one, to fall back on, but then, it's a school-based policy. They can craft it as they wish.
So, what policy are we starting with to look at? Are we starting at the new recommended one, or the one that we had before, the EBCFA?
The new one. That's in the folder for tonight's meeting, I think it was our.
Yep, it's in the next folder, yes. Okay.
And who's working on the policy between now and then?
I mean, we all.
We all are, pretty much, because everybody, everybody should have an idea of what they want. That's why we'll probably have another discussion at the October meeting, and hopefully, you know, all be able to agree on something.
Well, we, I just, typically, we assign one person or two people to the policy to work on it, and then they present the changes at the next meeting. So, this one, we're all going to do individually.
I just think that this is so, so kind of important, that I think everybody has their own ideas, and I think everybody should be able to share in them, so to speak, and I think we should all, excuse me, interpret things differently the way that we would interpret things. And I think it's kind of important on this specific thing. That's all. That's my thought.
So, we could technically put forward five policies next meeting that we'll look at?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. All right. Thank you very much. Warrants. Mrs. Dragonetti.
The following warrants were issued and paid for fiscal year 2022. Bill warrants. On August 26, 2021, a warrant for the total of $21,272.2. On September 2, 2021, a warrant in total of $84,481.42. On September 9, 2021, a warrant in total of $26,085.34. And on September 16, 2021, a warrant in total of $93,672.60. The following payroll warrants, August 20, 2021, $464,817.75. And September 3, 2021, $516,434.76. As always, all warrants are public record, and once signed, are available in the selectman's office for review.
Thank you, Mrs. Dragonetti. Public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public comment. Do we have anyone to speak tonight? Not seeing any, we will move on to our district announcements. District meetings, okay. PTO meeting, September 28 at 7:00 PM at the Howard Library. The Middle-Senior High School, September 17, grade eight field trip to the YMCA. September 23, ring sales night, 4:30 to 6:30 PM in the CAF. September 24, Grand March, 6:00 PM in the gymnasium, the class of 2022 prom. Are we all set for that? Is everybody's good to go? The kids are excited?
Yeah.
Thorny Lee? Oh, nice. All good. At the Howard School, September 15 is Pitcher Day. September 16 is Curriculum Night. October 13, the PTO Fun Run. The Rozelle McDonald School, September 23, Curriculum Night is from 5 to 7:00 PM, and also, October 13, the PTO Fun Run. And at the Spring Street School, on October 13, the PTO Fun Run Preschool Fit Dance. Our next regular scheduled school committee will be October 4 at 6:30 PM in the Middle-Senior High School Learning Commons. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.